Okay. So, close file? Can I have a motion to close file? Oh, I already have a motion on.
Nobody vote?
All in favor?
To close file.
I hearing no... Hearing no no's to speak of? This is no.
Close.
Or one no? And one no from council member fresh on his seat. Okay. Can in the context of the bills? Okay.
Point of order? Point of order?
Yeah.
What, I mean, I'm just calling a point of order because I want to make sure we're following the right process here. We're, right now, we voted to close file, the communication. There was, we're the majority to close, one no, so it is closed. So now, the next thing on the agenda, I'm just trying to figure out the process of where we're at because I don't want to be out of order in what we're doing.
On just a minute. We will have the two bills before us. We can bring people forward to speak. And yeah, no. And we can, you can be called forward. Any council member can call people forward in that context and they can discuss things that were said and refer to what was said in, in the presentations, in the context of the bills. So, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda.
Bill 318 for the 2012-2014 Council, Trauma Mends, Chapter 4, Article 1, Section 4-1, and adds a new section to Article 4 of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to treatment of aquarium life. Establishes provisions for the protection of marine life that is harvested with the intent to sell for aquarium use. Protections include prohibiting withholding food from aquarium life for more than 24 hours, requiring ample water supply when transporting aquarium life, and prohibiting the transport of aquarium life in a manner that is likely to cause injury or death. Any person violating these provisions would be subject to a fine of up to $1,000, imprisonment of up to 30 days or both, introduced by Ms. Willie. There is a pending motion on the floor by Ms. Poindexter to recommend passage of Bill 318 on first reading.
Get my [inaudible].
I think I should refer it to you to, before I speak.
Okay. Are you gonna turn the, are you gonna relinquish the chair now?
Yeah, I'm gonna relinquish the chair.
Okay. So...
I think just keeping it orderly and not doing something with it.
Let's, I could show that I've assumed a chair. On bill, we're now on Bill 318. Councilmember Willie?
On Bill, on Bill 318, let me say, the key difference here, or key point in this is that we are not just specifying what the percentage of mortality should or shouldn't be, but we're actually specifying the ways that they should accomplish that. And what, whereas I think that we have an important concern to conserve and protect the natural resources, and that is the overall goal of this bill, I am going to withdraw this bill and move on to the, and not proceed with this one.
Okay. And that's okay with me. So, Bill 318 is now withdrawn, so Mr. Cork, will you please read in Bill 24?
Bill 24 amends Chapter 6 of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition as amended, adding a new article relating to licensing aquarium life operations for long-term well-being of the county and its inhabitants. Regulates aquarium life operations by setting forth procedures, terms, and conditions for issuance of licenses. Conditions include a $100 application fee, annual renewals, an annual fee of $2,000 for operations, with an additional $1,000 for certain species, and report every 180 days to the Finance Director. Any person operating without a license is subject to a fine of $1,000. Each violation of one or more conditions of the license will result in a fine of not more than $500 per incident, and failure to file a report will result in a license suspension. Introduced by Ms. Willie.
I have a motion to approve Bill 24.
Motion to approve Bill 24.
Okay, so it moved by Councilmember Willie and seconded by Councilmember Anishi. Councilmember Willie?
I want to just first state why I feel this is an important county issue overall, and that is protecting our natural resources. And I think it's not just protecting the fish, but I think, as some of the presenters made clear, there's an entire web of life here. And it's that web of life overall that we're protecting by protecting the, our natural resources. And I think the state constitution reaffirms that protection of the natural resources is not just a state responsibility, but also of its subdivisions. It was this county that challenged that act in 2006, and the Supreme Court made clear, no, you are a subdivision of the state and you share that fiduciary responsibility. We also have in our county charter that it is the county's duty to conserve and protect natural resources. And we're basically acting as trustees, as with a fiduciary duty, not just for ourselves, but for future generations. And it's in that context that I brought this forward. And at the same time, it's an issue of significant concern with opposing views. And as I see it, you know, we have conflicting legitimate views. This isn't a, there's the good guys and the bad guys. You know, I really feel we share this. I think a lot of those who are collectors do it because they love the fish and want to share that, you know? They want to do what's good. So, again, I just want to say, again, it's not, we're not dealing with black and whites. The hardest questions are always where there are conflicting legitimate interests and how do we best balance those. So, I, I want to just stress the difference, key difference between Bill 318 and moving to 24 is that it's, that Bill 24, it's a licensing bill, but it doesn't, it focuses on humane treatment in terms of the bottom line. As many have said, it's that we do it with either, you know, many times no loss or 1% loss. And so it's saying, you get to that, you do it how you can best do without having us tell you exactly how much water there is or that. So, I think we're, you know, I'm, I don't want to act like I'm the greatest scientist, but I think at the same time, we're looking at here at functioning within a precautionary principle. And I think the second thing I just want to stress is educating ourselves. I do feel strongly about our county responsibility and not just shifting, this is for the state to deal with. And it is ours, and I think we have a special coolie on it here because really, this is one of the few reefs that are still, you know, fantastic. It has gone down. It is different from when I first, you know, snorkel back in 1971 to the 80s, you know, it is going down. But you look around the world, the level of depletion, you look even just at Maui and the other counties, what we're saying is, we don't want to get there. And we're afraid, I'm afraid, that, you know, we are, you know, maybe going different, you know, lines, and this is going up and down, but how many places have we been where you walk into the water and there are all these jellyfish and slime? And there's a tipping point from which you can't go back. And a lot of that's happened in the Caribbean, that's where it's happening. So, I'm not here to eliminate the aquarium trade, I just may see it that way. But how do we balance these concerns? And I think, I don't, I feel that we, by the, by the county going through and basically educating itself, and I think that whatever happens, just having this session and having this amount of knowledge, I think for us, where our, our life is, so much of our tourism, so much of our economy, so much of our environmental welfare and our sociocultural welfare is dependent on the significant health of the reef, that we need to take that coolie on it. So I just want to stress that. I do think, you know, as I've studied the issues in terms of what the state does in preemption and looking through it, I see it as we have under the general law of our responsibility for us public trust, for public trust resources, that we do have the authority to do a bill. I do think that I need to tighten it up in places where I feel that I could be accused where there's unnecessary overlap. But I want to say in terms of preemption and make it very clear that we can have laws, we have overlapping jurisdictions, and we can have laws that are supplement the states. Unless there's an intent, express or implied, that it's meant to be exclusive jurisdiction, there's nothing that says we can't do it. So it is a complex area of law, and I am working with Molly and going to work further, I just, in terms of clarity, in terms of the lack of the express or implied intent that, that only the state can regulate. And what they're regulating here, what I mean to regulate, is what goes on on this island, on this land. So if one of the collectors comes in and they have their boat, and they're coming from Maui, or they're doing everything there, and they're not coming onto our island, I don't see that we have jurisdiction. But where they come here and their operation on land is on this island that we do. So, I'm not saying every issue of preemption is clear cut, and I certainly feel that we need to preserve and maximize our home rule regardless of what we decide. You know, that this is here, that people in Honolulu, where they don't have, there's some, you know, areas of fisheries are Maui or Kauai, but we, it's pretty much, it's not like it's over in, on the east side of the island, it's pretty much this one little area of our coast. And it may seem big to us, but you look around the world and see just these few pockets of where you have these fish. So that's why it's so important. I just want to say, there are things that I would want to correct. I think there's some of the fish where I put additional costs to be on for those, and there may be several that should be taken off or added on. But basically, what this is saying is, you get a license, you're here and you're operating on this island, that you don't do things that are likely to cause death or injury in excess of 1% and that no person's employed that's had been convicted of a cruelty to animal. And you display on the island, you don't not out on the boat, that you are licensed. So that's where I am, I'm gonna yield, I think there are people that, I'm gonna yield to the other council members.
Thank you. Councilmember Kalakaua.
I love this beautiful place that you all speak of. And for, for as many years as you've loved it and lived it, we have native Hawaiians here that have generations felt what you're feeling, but to a deeper cultural degree. And I, and that's where I feel we need to balance. We need to come to some sort of, as legislators, to protect our resources and to protect our people's rights. Mahalo, Margaret. Thank you. The discussion was very intense and educational all the way around. Mahalo.
Thank you, Councilmember Yehaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I too wanted to thank everybody that came out to testify today from the community and especially the presenters, Dr. Walsh and Dr. Musick and Dr. Telleck. I think it was quite an important discussion that we had, and thanking Ms. Willie for making this possible. My position is that we do have an obligation to do all that we can to protect, to protect our reef ecosystem. And I was one that has worked on public trust issues in the past for quite a number of years. And I know that it's always hard when there's user groups that have vested interests too, and it's difficult to strike a balance. So, but protecting our public trust resources for future generations is, I think, my most important job. And even more compelling, I feel, is my obligation to protect native Hawaiian gathering rights and subsistence gathering rights and the ability to gather the fish that, that are for food. I would be interested to know what, or happy to see what Ms. Willie is going to do to tighten this, this up. I don't know whether, there's a bill in the House that we heard about today, 873. I don't know all the parameters of that. I know it's been amended to tighten up some regulations, so it might be good for us to track that. And if an additional license can be required on a county level, I would support that if it, you know, if it doesn't conflict with what they already have to do to get a license from the state. I don't know if the cost is a little high here. And I don't know what kind of things you're already looking at because I don't study this, you know, as deeply as you have. So, I don't know, I guess knowing my position, I would, I would like to do something to make sure that we regulate properly here for the long run of the greatest protection that we can afford while still allowing people to be in business. I would appreciate, I'm not sure if you're going to postpone this or, or what, but whether we get into more discussion tonight may be, it may be premature, so I guess I'd like to hear what you're thinking to do. Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. I think what I'd like to do is hear, what I'd like to do is hear what all the council members have to say, and if they would like to, anyone wants to bring someone forward, that's fine. But I'd like to perhaps recess it and not postpone it and work on it a little more in terms of taking in all of what we've heard and what else is going on. So that's where I stand. But I'm not, I don't want to stop before all council members have the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Anishi? No, I'm sorry. Councilmember Yehaw, he still had the, oh, no, you, you finished. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Anishi?
Well, I think just to answer Ms. Yehaw's questions about what's happening at the legislature, maybe Mr. Walsh can come up? Because what I sent through this newspaper article is that the latest version for Bill 873 is now Mayoko to have the task for, or has tasked that the State Department of Land and Natural Resources, Resources creating rules, right? And to be limited entry commercial program fishing permits and bag limits. So, would you know anything what's happening with that bill?
To the best of my understanding, they've put several amendments into it, so the original intent is gone. And the two that I'm aware of, and I think that the only two, one is to sort of charge DLNR to investigate or look into or recommend a limited entry program for the aquarium fishery, okay? Details of which would be worked out by DLNR. And then the other component was to, again, similarly, look at the establishment of bag limits. I'm not sure the exact wording, whether it's on all species or certain species, but that's what I picked up, those are the two ones. But it's still in flux, so that could possibly be.
Right. And then Ms. Representative Nicole Owen, who represents North Kona, said that we're gonna leave it up to the department to determine the best approach.
Correct.
And so, a council member, I would think that we should wait until we see what happens at the state level, and then we can come back and then look, look over what we can do. But I would suggest, as you mentioned, like, yeah, we say as well, yeah, and then, you know, wait until what happens with the state legislature. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kanuha or Councilchair Kanuha, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, also want to echo everybody else's sentiment and thanking everybody for coming out with this again. But, you know, as, I want to speak to the bill itself. You know, you have a lot of things inside here, licensing, enforcement, terms of license, renewals of license, conditions of license, enforcement and inspection, penalties, citation, this is everything the state does. So I have a real big concern with this and the preemption that the state will, they oversee this currently. They have a very good process going. I mean, I could look at all these papers, Hawaii Administrative Rules, Title 13, you know, Subtitle IV, Fisheries, Marine Fisheries Management Areas, Chapter 60.4, Bill for an Act, Act 306, relating to the West Hawaii Regional Fishery Management. There's, it goes on and on of the long-established, well-regulated industry by the state and the Department of Land and Natural Resources. I'm not saying we don't have a obligation to do this, but the state is currently doing this. So that's, that's the issue I have with this bill specifically and the preemption that is involved with this. You know, the state has been working with the industry for decades now. What is it, 10, 20, 30, 40 years? On the regulation of these aquatic resources, of our aquatic resources, you know, a concern came up that, you know, these types of measures, these legislative measures are here because the industry itself will not reform. You know, I'm pretty sure the industry is well-involved with the West Hawaii Fisheries Council in how they reform this last group of, you know, the whitelist type of thing. I think that's what came out of the industry and their reform. And I think it's a great thing, you know? I'm, I'm happy that we have a West Hawaii Fisheries Council so that everybody can be part of this whole process in how we regulate our marine resources. You know, the county, us as a county, we don't have, we're not, we don't have these regulatory abilities. And when, you know, you have that the police department is gonna be the enforcement department, you know, along with the county animal control contractor, I wish the police department was here to see if they actually have that, you know, enforcement capability to do any of what we're trying to do here in this bill. So I'm, I mean, I appreciate, I completely appreciate what Ms. Willie is, is doing, and I know the means in why, why this bill came out. But as, as this bill is currently, I don't think that the county can provide the, the level of enforcement that the state already currently provides. And Ms. Stevens, I'd like to ask a question about preemption, this bill, how it will, how it relates actually to our state licensing and, you know, everything that the state has long established with the regulation of this industry. I don't know if that was a broad enough question, but...
Okay. Good evening, Chair Poindexter, committee members, Molly Stevens, Corporation Council. I, yes, this bill does raise jurisdiction and preemption questions, and I would be happy to elaborate on them. I think that it would be best if I did so in executive session. Or maybe if you could rephrase what your specific question was, you know, maybe I can answer in open session. But I think to really get into the, the issues with the legality of the bill and problems with preemption, it would be better to do that in closed session so I can speak freely with the council.
Thank you. Just real quickly, before I get into that, did this bill go through the Corporation Council? Has vetted through the Corporation Council before it came up? Before the council?
No, it wasn't vetted by my office.
Okay. You know, I don't know what I'd, what question I'd ask that we would have to go into executive session on, you know, this, but... The overarching thing is, you know, the state does all these licensing, these of applications, you know, application fees, and, you know, they got to report back to the state on their bag catches and all these different requirements down the line. They gotta get these permits. It just seems double, you know, doing the same exact thing that the state's already doing. So it just kind of seems counterproductive in how, with justice bill. I don't know if that's even a question for you, I'll just throw that out there, but I'll think of a question for you, you know? Okay. At this point, I'll yield, Madam Chair.
Okay. Councilmember Chong?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, I agree with Council Chair Kanuha in his assessment of the situation. Look, I like fish or fishes, depending on what we're talking about, like anyone else. But unlike Ms. Willie, who said that this is a complex area of law, I don't think it's complex at all, it's very simple. We're prohibited from enacting this kind of legislation. Chapter 46 of the Hawaii Vice Statutes pretty much prescribes what the counties can, well, can do. And one of those things, one of the enumerated powers, is that each county shall have the power to exercise regulatory powers over business activity as are assigned to them by Chapter 445 or other general law. So when I look at Chapter 445, there's no mention of regulating fish collection, none whatsoever. So clearly, we can't do that. That's the only possible thing, only possible statute that I can see that will enable us to make a law like this. To me, it's got to be done by the state, if anything. Moreover, the state constitution reserves the protection of marine resources to the state of Hawaii. You know, we're, without any power to do what's being done here. I mean, everybody's talking about home rule. I know, you know, we've talked about this before with regard to GMO and other things and... I, I just don't get it. I mean, I want to be able to do things for our county, but we are basically a municipal corporation of the state of Hawaii, and all of our powers are owing to the state. We can't do anything more than what's given to us. We cannot declare war against the Islamic State that's reserved to the federal government. We can't do things that are outside of the scope of our powers, basically. You know, and now I'm gonna talk theoretically here, you know? People have talked about how back in the day, you know, things were so much better. Yeah, I lived, I've lived here all my life, and I recall people telling us, oh, you know, when we used to go down to Monaco many years ago, the, the water would be red, red with red fish, and pachi, maybe a veil, veil. As far as I know, it's not lacking of the red color because of the fish collectors, it's because of fishermen, right? Overfishing. But I don't see anybody trying to regulate fishing, you know, spearfishing or snorkeling as one of my bains, quite frankly. Because if anybody did that, you're gonna have a, a room full of people here that are gonna just take up our, our hours and, I mean, all of them, the meeting times that we have for the next several years. Nobody wants to do it. But when you really think about it, that's what's causing the depletion of the fish supply, you know, on our islands, fishing. But hey, guys are doing it to eat, and I can understand that. Spearfishing. A lot of people, I understand, are going now in near shore and just depleting everything. Very irresponsible group of people. Little maninis. Just wiping them all out, eating them, yeah, but that's not sustainable, in my opinion. And snorkeling, my goodness. Yeah, I used to go down to Honolulu Bay many, many years ago, and it was really nice. Now, I understand that they have to even regulate the times that people can go and, and do snorkeling there. I'm, you know, I'm not really a snorkeler anymore, but even in, in Kailua Kona, the same thing. I mean, you know, you got all this sunscreen and, you know, lotion floating around, and you know, that can't be good for fish. So, you know, we're really picking on the wrong people here. I mean, you know, we, we have to, you know... it, we, we have to, you know, all get together and try to protect our marine resources, but to just single out the fish collectors, I think that's very unfair. And that's, that's my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Logan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I gotta hand it to Councilmember Chung because I was looking over that, um, uh, Chapter forty-six and on that section seven. One of the things that I wanted to emphasize is the other general law and I was gonna bring that question up to you. But first of all, I just wanted to say, um, I wanna thank everybody for coming because for one thing, it takes courage to voice out your opinion, whether you're a majority or a minority. It takes a lot of guts. And I must admit, when I first ran into this issue, it's not really a major issue in Puna. And, um, a couple of people came to my office and I listened to what they had to say and I was concerned about the marine life. And I was, um, actually accepted the fact that more water will protect the fish. And I came to a council meeting and I must admit, I didn't look any further than that. I should have done a lot more research. But what really triggered, um, more research was when testifiers came and presented a different viewpoint of what was presented to me when I met the individuals. And I'm glad that the testifiers came because it made me look into, um, other sides that I didn't really understand and got actual, um, data that's relevant to this issue. And how grateful are we to have the aquatics division with all that data? And I just wanna say, um, thank you to all the presenters that came. Um, at this time, we have a bill in front of us to license an industry. And for me, I've always been a strong advocate for entrepreneurs. And I feel like the state of Hawaii has one of the strictest rules for entrepreneurs. And for someone like myself who's looking for the future of other, um, people like me, I want to give them more opportunities. And here you are in industry that, I must say, from the data, is sustainable. And others may disagree with that. But there is one point from the data that I did get which I wanna look forward to actually putting some, um, some reso to urge the aquatics division to look into the Achilles heel. Um, tank, Achilles tank, what am I, Achilles heel? I'm talking about Troy now. But the Achilles tank, I felt that they are in a steady decline. And I feel we should put some measures on that specific species. But looking at all the other data, I feel it's a bit too much. And right now, we're putting a blanket, um, law that shouldn't be looked into, a blanket law. And it should be looked at each different species and what's going on and then what we could do to protect them. And that's how I feel about this. I don't know what you could do to make this any better. Your, I always appreciate, um, your hard work, Councilmember Willie. You take on issues that most council members that I've known or not in this council, but I, in my lifetime, of all the veterans that I've met, you take them. I mean, you lift the flag and you charge. I wish I had that confidence when I was younger because I feel that I would've done a lot better in high school. But I just wanna say, um, I don't support this. And I don't know what you could do to change it for me to support it. Maybe you'll surprise me in the future and I'm willing to work with you. But right now, that's just what I've come up with, with all the things that I've looked into. And I will be putting up some legislation to resolve some of the issues that I see from the data that I've gathered. And I just wanna, again, thank everybody for coming and testifying and sharing your information.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Palakam.
Yes, since we have Molly at the table, I wanted to point out one thing regarding, well, more than one thing. Actually, the application fee and the renewal annual fee, are we even, would we even be allowed to do that?
Generally speaking, you know, separate from the subject of this particular bill, the county does have the authority to, um, impose fees for business licenses. Again, the question becomes whether this is the type of activity that the council has the authority to regulate. Um, but yes, within your authority to regulate business activity, you have the power to impose fees for the application.
The reason why I ask that is because for myself, we pay a TA tax. And now to suggest that the county imposed another TA tax? That's.
The fee for a license would be different than, considered different than a tax. Yeah, the authority to license is different than a taxing authority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Willie.
Um, yeah, um, I agree with what everyone has said, basically, is put that all in. Um, I, I think it's good to work through this. Um, I do feel that we could, should have a home rule here. Um, I think that all the arguments that were stated, such as what Chair Kanua and Councilmember, um, Chung, um, were the ones that were really addressed in two thousand six in the lawsuit and saying, no, this is a state thing and not county to be preserving and overseeing natural resources. And the court said, no, at every government decision level. Um, I, I read that, um, we do have authority to regulate those certain licenses or certain occupations. Um, but we also have it under general law and I think that that, you know, statute and where the court specifically has ruled on that, we do. Now, I'm not gonna say it's, you know, I think, I admire Councilmember Chung and he's very bright, but we don't always agree. Um, but, um, I also, I always go back to, like, on the agriculture and the fire ant and when I worked on that back in two thousand eight and we came up with a county, um, that we needed to do something and everyone said, no, look, this is for the state. Why are we doing this? And, and it was always, no, this is a state issue. And now look where we are. You know, so I just, that's the sense from which I come from. And I think if someone wants to challenge and say we don't, but if we were to at least say we're making a statement if we pass this and it's making a statement to the state. And maybe if in the end we can't work it out in terms of preemption, maybe we ultimately do a resolution in terms of trying to reinforce what the state does. But I think that if we just turn around and say, no, we're gonna back off, there might be a state, there's might be a home rule, let's not do anything. No biggie, no biggie, that's what it says to me, rather than move forward, work on this, maybe it comes out, we can't do it. Um, again, I don't, I want to stress my respect. I really appreciate Jim Level coming and talking to me and others and, um, I really wanna work on this issue. Um, in terms of that, this, why are we picking on them and not doing other things? I feel that we do work on those other things, whether it's the injection wells. I look at the money that I am actually in helping Puakam on that. I look at the, I think in one of Dr. Walsh's lectures talking about, look at O'Galea and the runoffs and the roundup. We're trying to work on that. We are trying, they're all part of a puzzle and this is one piece and we can't look at them all at the same time, so. Um, I would appreciate, I would like to recess this, work on it further and, um, and, you know, maybe we can't work on it. I mean, I realize that there are issues, but I'd like to proceed and not go where we're just slapping it down.
So before you recess, can I, um, Councilmember O'Nishin?
I just wanted to give me a couple of comments on what Ms. Willie mentioned about like, you know, what, about the state, the state that working with the fire ants and so forth. And, you know, I've been involved with that. We created something for the county, but the thing is, there's a bill right now that's alive that you can go work, yes, that you can go work with the legislature, you can go and see how you, maybe you can make it better. And then also working with all the stakeholders, right? And then coming back to the council, maybe bringing up a resolution in supporting this bill, um, eight, eight, seven, three. Okay, so there's options that you can do before we, we can pass like Bill twenty-four or, you know, maybe you could even withdraw Bill twenty-four and then work with the state first and then, like, like I said, coming up with a resolution. So.
Before we move to postpone?
Well, no. Oh, well, I wanted to see if you're gonna, if you're not gonna withdraw, then just recess this.
Um, okay, so.
Can I respond?
Um, did you, did he have a question for you or?
Well, he was asking me about, can I just respond and work on that bill, on this state bill? So I'd like.
Can, can, um, I, because we have, um, Councilmember David and Councilmember, um, coming here, I want to speak first, so. And then about the recessing, I, you know, the chair will do the honors. So anyway, um, Councilmember David.
Very quickly, um, before we close, um, thank you everyone for coming out and, um, I really wanna support Margaret and your desire to make this Bill twenty-four a, um, work on it, to, to make it, um, legally sound if that's the, um, the goal here, which I think it is, and, um, I support you in that. In the bill's current form, I cannot support that, so I would support a postponement. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Kanua.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna go with, you know, I, it's hard to say we're gonna postpone or recess this to make it better or, you know, in line with our county laws or laws that are provided by us through state. Um, and I'll kinda go off, but I don't think we could make, like Mr. Iligan said, I don't, I don't, I don't know what we could do to, to make this legally, uh, sound for myself, that's just myself. Um, and the reason why I wouldn't support a postponement or recess, you know, this bill wasn't vetted through our LRB or our Corporation Council. And there's an issue with that. You know, you can, it's hard to bring it up before the council and we vet it through us and then we go back and vet it through the appropriate departments. It's, there's, I have a big issue with that. Um, we're gonna keep on bringing this up and make amendments to a bill that originally should have been vetted through the, and done through a proper process, um, Ms. Willie. I'm sorry, I just wanted to state that to the rest of the council. But, um, that's why I have an issue with either recessing or postponing it. But it's the desire of the chair to recess and it's the desire of the whole council to postpone it, so.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Eligan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've learned this throughout my experience in the council. And one of the things I, um, have a suggestion is that maybe you could write to Corporation Council a formal opinion regarding this bill on the legal matters and then we can find out. But from there on, I think you can do it. Um, I, I think that would be a first great start. So legally, we can do it or not. I mean, you tend to trend towards, um, trying to appeal everything. So maybe we can save the county dollars for actually not trying to pass a bill that would be potential lawsuits in the future. So maybe getting an opinion from Corporation Council would be a good start. I've learned that lesson the hard way, 'cause I actually did something of that, so just recently. So, um, maybe you could start there. And then you'll know what you could go with, but I would suggest just withdraw it, send a letter, or maybe I take this back, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of Corporation Council. Maybe you might have a suggestion on how she might be able to do that.
No, our office is always happy to provide review of legislation before it's introduced and actually we, we definitely appreciate having that opportunity. Um, in this case, we weren't asked to review prior to it being introduced, so I didn't take a look at it until I saw it on the council agenda and, um, since that time, I've, you know, been doing some research, but certainly, we'd be happy to review any legislation for issues with, um, legality and otherwise before it gets put on a council agenda.
And one more thing too. You doing this, Councilmember Willie, you have taken a lot of our time. A lot of these people could have invested their time doing something else, either more productive in their community or spending time with their family. So I just wanna say, if you could save us some time and I will do the same, is vet this out first and figure out if legally we could really do it. But bringing everybody over here and spending the whole day here, I must say, we can't get that time back, so. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, okay. Um, so I get, it's so hard when you're a chair because you cannot speak. I have to wait till the very end, but, um, I wanna just clear up two things that was publicly stated, um, and, and directed, um, at me. Um, so I spoke with Mr. Pete Basabi when he had stated that he had made three meetings that I canceled with him, but it was three phone calls, it was two phone calls and then a call that about a message. He got ahold of my staff and messaged that he was gonna be meeting with other council members and all, so I apologize if I didn't get back to you yet. I, um, if you look at my schedule, I, you know, apologies, but I will definitely make some time for you. Um, another thing that may have been taken out of context, I know that was said that I don't believe in science and facts. And I think at the last council meeting, we know, and even at this meeting, we've heard from a lot of the local people and about the concern for their, the culture and their heritage and, um, what may happen to that, that they wanna hang on to that, so I understand that. And it was very passionate from that previous hearing that most of you were here on also. So I spoke on behalf of that, saying the science, the studies that are being done to justify why it's okay to take the fish. Then it mattered to me. What was mattering to me is what the people were afraid of losing. So, and I know we have some of our, um, you know, people who have lived, born and raised here that are collecting fish, but you're also, I'm sure, concerned about the culture, all of that, that you may lose at some point. So like Councilmember David said, and I agree, there needs to be some balance. Because life changes and things change and we need to find some balance. And I also agree with Council Chair, um, Kanua, who stated about his concerns on the enforcement capabilities. So that is a concern. So I will definitely be, um, meeting with our court council. I'd like to hear from, um, different points of views, um, from, um, Mr. Level and Mr. Basabi. Yes, um, and there needs to be some balance. So at this time, I'm gonna take this meeting into recess until the following council meeting because I cannot recess it to the call of the chair. As the chair, I'm gonna recess till committee meeting, which, when is our next committee meeting? Can I get a date? March third? Okay, so this, um, meeting will be.
Madam Chair.
In.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, just point of information, um, I guess if Ms. Willie could consult with you or if, you know. I guess Ms. Willie could consult with you or if, you know...
Okay.
Because if she's looking at this bill at the state legislature, she's going to be, she's going to need more time than that.
Because I, I apologize because I heard you say you wanted it to go into recess, but you wanted to hear. If you had to change your fight, I'm okay to support you.
No, I'm just saying I'd like it to be a little longer. I don't see the bill as now as doing what and what. So I don't see any harm in putting it out to...
Okay, so can you give me a date? Because I'd like, if I'm recessing it, I would like to...
Yes, I think it should be to a date. I'd actually, what is our first date in April?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Point of order, Councilmember...
They need to change the tape. So can we call like a two-minute recess here quickly?
And look at the calendar.
Okay, then going into recess for five minutes. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order, and I'd like to throw a wrench in this whole thing. I'm sorry, but, you know, after speaking with corp counsel and getting some advice on whether it goes into recess, postponement, or withdrawal, because usually recessing it is when you're going to come back pretty quick. When you're coming back with some substantial, maybe amendments and some circumstances that may change because of what's going to happen at the state legislature and avoiding any opportunity for the public to testify on substantial changes that may happen, and we're going to only have a discussion, that is not a good thing. So whether it be a withdrawal or a postponement, you know, I think that may be the best way to go. So I'm, I'm not, I don't want to recess this. And so I... Go ahead, Councilmember Willie.
So I'd like to move to postpone to April 14th for the reasons that you stated.
Okay, so there's a, the motion to postpone to April 15th. Any discussion, Councilmember, oh, seconded by Councilmember Pelletta, but Councilmember Onishi.
So just in case, like, there's a meeting for me in Hilo, and I have to stay in Hilo that two days, will I still be able to participate?
Yeah.
Yes.
Corp counsel or...
Yes.
You sure?
Yes. Yeah, you got to just send a letter again for your, that you'll be in Hilo out of the Hilo office.
Because, you know, I just got a text saying that when we had the GMO and I wasn't able to participate. I couldn't participate through, to video conference in Hilo because this, the, or, oh, okay, well, I'm sorry. There, it was on recess. Okay, it was a recess.
Yeah.
But so recess and postponement, it's two different...
Sure, and the reason for that was because the meeting was recessed. We couldn't produce a new agenda. We're technically still on that agenda.
Okay, yeah, because now we think testimony is...
And the issue is participating by video conference.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you. So on the motion to postpone, any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, so I think I'll take a roll call vote on the motion to postpone this to April 14th. Mr. Clark?
Okay, on the motion to postpone, Mr. Chung.
Sure.
That means we don't have to hear public testimony on this.
You will have to hear public testimony again. And the reason for that is because, because there may be some substantial amendments to the, to this, because of what may happen at the state legislature. So it's, Miss, right now, it's the motion to postpone. You can vote for yeonae to postpone it, and then we go back to, then we're going to be back to the discussion on Bill 24. So it's...
Either way, we're going to listen to public testimony. So come on the drive, it's never going to get fixed then for Hilo. Don't have time for that.
So right now, so if you want to vote not for the postponement, then we'll go back to Bill 24, and people can vote on Bill 24 or, you know, something else can happen at that point. So, Councilmember Onishi.
Okay, but so if there's a, if there's, say, a compromise or within the state bill that Ms. Willie is happy with, then we could still have it at recess, and then she could withdraw it. But there would not be change to this bill.
The problem about the recess is that it's, the whole thing for Robert's rules on recessing is if it's a short turnover and there's no really, not giving the people the opportunity to testify again if there's substantial changes that may have...
But what if there isn't? What if there isn't?
Yeah, but that's if. So if, so a recess would not be a logical thing. Either it would be, Ms. Willie now had made a motion to postpone versus making a motion to withdraw. So right now, she made a motion to postpone it, and we're on the motion to postpone, Councilmember Willie.
Okay, I think I will withdraw.
You're postponing?
And then we can see where it's at. I think that would be...
So you're withdrawing the postpone, your motion to postpone, and then now you're going to, yeah, you're just going to withdraw Bill 24?
I'm going to withdraw the bill, not because we don't have more to accomplish, but I think rather than, I think we've got more to do. I think this was, I knew that Walsh was coming on this date, and I had to get everything ready. So I'm just saying, it's not like I was trying to cut everything.
So right now, what just happened, just so everybody's clear, it was the motion to postpone was withdrawn, and the second was withdrawn. And now Ms. Willie is withdrawing Bill 24. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Motion by Councilmember Onishi, second by Councilmember Illegan. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Meeting is adjourned.